It's probably. Can still get some of them.
Okay.
Have you been recording yet?
No.
Awesome. More of a thing. Um. Right, roll call, just to check.
Here.
Like McCain.
You're sweet.
Since other ones. Or. That's it.
Yeah.
Perfect, yes. About Kevin Pipple here. Is Clint with us?
Clint's not here, no Clint.
Just so I'm sure. Well personally, just say. Mike, do you want to do a secretary for a pause?
Yeah, last meeting, we didn't do that, but I know certainly I would. I, on the way home, I was like, I think.
Same thing. Should I be seating someone else?
We're ready.
And request, Kevin, we're going to see you today. And as I understand, go into, start with Parks and Rec, is that right?
What there is with some good there.
Mark, you are on.
Okay, terrific, thank you. And thank you for moving the schedule for me, I've got another meeting at seven. So facilities improvements, this is for A. Uh, we have four different projects proposed, uh, the first is to make renovations to the basketball court at Bel Air, it's cracked. In the center of the court, there's a storm drain, I guess at one time that would be plugged up and flooded and used as an ice rink, but that hasn't been the case in a number of years. And so we're proposing to reconstruct the basketball court, repave, seal coat, and remove twenty-four hundred square feet of additional pavement that was adjoining the basketball court, I think that was part of the ice rink. And plant some grass in there. The second project is for the replacement of stairs at the beach at Sand, uh, Snake Hill Park in Noank. Those stairs were put in a number of years ago and are declining and deteriorating, and so we worked with the engineering division to come up with an estimate to replace that, that is forty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-five thousand dollars for the seal coating and line striping of uh, three pickleball courts uh, and a basketball court on the existing service out behind the Groton Community Center. And last but not least, um, a hundred and twenty thousand for the design and replacement of the crumbling boat ramp at Perizzotti Boat Launch. The issue right now is the, the ramp doesn't go out very far into the water and there's a drop off at the very end, and what happens frequently, frequently is uh, boaters with trailers, uh, get out so far and then the whole, and then the trailer and everything drops into the water, and so we're proposing to extend that boat ramp further into the water, so we don't have that issue, and we're working with an engineer who's working with, uh, deep on going through the permitting process. So those are the four projects proposed under facility improvements for F Y E twenty-six.
Start.
So Mark, this is Kevin Fistol. What, what's the usage of that particular ramp? Um, I know there's problems, probably less people use it, but you have a count as far as the number of, of boats that are launched there in any given year?
I, I don't, that's not something that we're, I, I don't think deep records that.
Yeah.
And, and we don't either, uh, we frequently see boats and, and trailers in that parking lot that's adjacent to the bass, uh, uh, adjacent to the baseball field, but I, no, I cannot give you an accurate count, I know we have heard from boaters and fishermen, you know, about this issue. And it was brought up a few years ago and we're finally getting to trying to address it.
So when, when we do address it this year, because it seems like a reasonable expense, are you going to try to attempt to enable that so that people know that they can come back to that boat camp? I mean, is there any media type of plan, um, as far as that's concerned?
Well, uh, yes, there would be, there isn't right now, but certainly, um, we would probably do some type of a ribbon cutting event to try to draw attention and then use our outreach uh, in, in social media to, to get the word out, and then also see if we could somehow work with deep, I'm not sure if they have a, a list of, they probably have a list of boat launches and, and see if we could somehow get on that list or, or note that there is a new, a new boat launch at that site, just to make fishermen aware, because that would probably be the source that most boaters and fishermen would go to would be deep, just to see what's happening at different places.
Yeah, where to launch and stuff, but I think for the town of Groton, I think it'd be very effective, you know, as I've seen you do before in Thrive fifty-five, which does great work on social media, I just think that type of approach would be very, if we're spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, would be very positive, and that's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, we would definitely use the, the outreach that we have, uh, currently with the department, you know, both through Instagram and, and Facebook. And then we've also been utilizing the the, the, I don't want to call them TVs, but the video message boards that are in a lot of the municipal buildings now.
Yeah. Yeah, I haven't seen you on TikTok, but. There's a little risk.
Not, not yet.
Thank you.
I'll ask it, Mark, for the signage for that boat launch. Is there any?
I, I think there's a there's a, yes, there is, yes, as you, as you turn into that park, uh, on the, on the right-hand side, uh, it says Perizzotti Boat Launch.
Okay, I've seen it.
Yeah.
Oh, so we have it. Oh, there it is. So we've got one kind of sign on the one side that says boat launch, and the other side says the park. So maybe somewhere in there, we might want to get those conjoined, since it's the same driveway.
Sure, yeah.
One, two. Two, two. Year connectivity program?
Yes. So we, this is actually a, a two-phase project as part of the bike and pedestrian master plan, uh, who did a presentation last evening. We've also contracted with F H I Studios to develop a wayfinding plan for the, uh, Groton Crosstown Greenway, and part of that was talked about last evening. So we budgeted, the, the total project cost is, uh, projected to be about a hundred and twenty thousand. Phase one would include, uh, kiosks, trail and roadway directional signage a, along the greenway. And just as a reminder, this greenway was adopted by the state back in, uh, twenty twenty-two. And, you know, it's a combination of on-road, uh, off-road, a, all the way across, starting at the Gold Star Highway and, and going all the way over to the, uh, the bridge that separates Mystic and, or bridge that separates Groton and Stonington in Mystic. One of the, when we did the recreational needs assessment, uh, in twenty twenty-two, one of the uh, outcomes of that, uh, the needs assessment was improved connectivity, and we feel by putting signage a, along the path will increase utilization of the, uh, Crosstown Greenway, and also just help people to feel more comfortable because they are, you know, there's going to be a lot of directional signs and whatnot.
Golf course improvement plan.
Uh, golf course improvement plan, uh, so we have a number of projects identified out over the next five years, and these are based on, uh, two different studies, uh, one study that was done a, a number of years ago. Um, and then a, a more recent study, uh, that just took place in twenty twenty-four. And between those two studies, uh, there are a number of improvements that need to be made, when this golf course was originally built, it was designed to accommodate probably ten to fifteen thousand rounds of golf. And currently, we're in excess of thirty-five thousand rounds of golf. So there are a number of improvements that need to be made. Uh, the course has quite a few bunkers. We do a golfer satisfaction survey every other year, and historically, you know, since I've been here, um, the part of the golf course that gets the lowest grade are the bunkers, so we try to, we've been focusing a lot on addressing the, the bunkers, uh, improving the bunkers, and that will continue a, along with the Ts, a lot of the Ts are, are just too small again for the number of rounds that are game, that are being played, that they get chewed up, and so we're trying to enlarge those, those T boxes. And this was originally proposed to be funded out of the capital and, uh, I'm sorry, out of the, uh, golf course fund balance, uh, but the town manager switched it for this year into the capital reserve fund.
How much does it cost? It's a piece for playing golf there.
I'm sorry, how much does it cost to what?
Play golf there.
Well, uh, it depends, um, on whether you're talking about a weekend or talking during the week. Uh, if you're a senior, if you're not, we have a number of different uh, price points depending on age, time that you're playing and and the number of holes you're playing, but I would where I think looking at about seventy dollars a round, that includes a cart. That, that would be.
Just get, trying to get a feel for it, because it looks like, surprised to hear that how many rounds were being played, but that means we're subsidizing six bucks.
Boat ramp and how many rounds.
Six bucks a round, sounds like, so that's okay.
I, it's, it's a very well-used course, there's, there's no doubt about it. So I haven't looked, Mark, at, it's just Kevin Fiftill again, at the business model, but is it break-even, um, prior to capital improvements?
Uh, yes, a, and in fact, over the last, the last four years have been our best four years. As far as revenue, and we had built up uh, our fund balance, uh, and the projects that we did this past fall were all funded through the golf course fund balance, and that's, again, that's what we were proposing to do for F Y E twenty-five, I, I'm sorry, F Y E twenty-six, um, and the town manager moved some things around and, and, and again, has put that into this, into the, uh, capital reserve fund.
Why was that?
Uh, I'm not sure. I was thankful that he did it. And, uh, I, I don't, I'm not sure. And if it wouldn't.
Of course, I, at, at a at a profit.
Right.
Yes.
So. Yeah. Cover some of it.
I, I can tell you that.
Offer, I always have trouble spending taxpayer money on, you know, things that I would never use.
Six dollars a game for the thing.
Yeah.
And so when we move that into that particular fund you cited, Mark, is it, why is that just a one-year versus a, a continuing fund, I guess? Then you go back to how you used to do it in twenty-six, right?
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have answers to those questions, I have not, um, discussed in detail, uh, the town managers, um, why he opted to do that.
Okay, let's just continue to move this one. Our investments.
Okay, so for F Y E twenty-six, I'm, we are proposing to install an accessible bathroom facility at what will be the pickleball hockey rink, uh, the hockey rink renovations were made this past summer and into the fall, and, uh, Public Works is has on their schedule to install six pickleball courts adjacent to the hockey, the hockey rink, which is between Thrive fifty-five and the library and that open space, and, and that project is expected to begin this spring. Uh, currently, there's a, a portlet that serves, uh, the hockey players, and given the, the popularity of pickleball and the number of courts that were, um, will be installed, you know, continuing to have just a, a portlet. I, I don't think that really meets the, the needs of the community, so we're proposing kind of a self-contained bathroom, you know, it has a, um, water storage, so it will have flushing capability and hand washing capability. You, you know, putting in a full-fledged bathroom would be considerably expensive, because we would have to tie into, you know, a, a forced water system probably out on Newtown Road, or I'm not even sure where the closest spot would be, so we found what we think is a uh, a compromise between, um, a, a portlet and a full-fledged bathroom.
And the maintenance on that, I'm sure it's got to be pumped out or something?
Yes, it would have to be pumped out, um, they estimated that it would be like a thousand flushes, so, um, you know, and we have a service that pumps out our portlets that we have in a number of parks, and, you know, we would just add that to the, um, add that to the list of parks, but it wouldn't have to be done as often, because the portlets get pumped out once a week. And we would have to figure out because it's new, we would have to just figure out how, you know, kind of see how quickly, uh, it would need to be pumped out.
Flushes per hour?
Uh, yeah. Yes, exactly.
So how many other, how many people would just be walking over to the library or walking over to the senior center? I would hope most, actually, if we had better bathrooms.
Yeah, but it has an electronic door locking.
Yes, there is electricity.
Put a code in?
What, I'm sorry?
Is it a code-based electronic door lock?
Would it be similar to those that were proposed at Sutton Park, where the, the lock occurs on a time basis?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. And, and the hours, the hours of use, because I'm sure you're all aware, we did put lights in, um, around the hockey rink, and, uh, the poles are up also for the for the pickleball court, so there would be extended use. You know, certainly after Thrive fifty-five had closed. So that, we're just trying to be proactive in what we anticipate is a lot more use i- in that area.
Does this operate all year round, or is it shut down in the wintertime, heated?
Yeah, no, it would be shut down in the wintertime, it's, it's not heated.
Yeah, wouldn't seem like it'd be wise. Just seems like, I don't, I don't know, what does it, I mean, I guess, it doesn't, it's fine, I suppose, I'm like a real building.
Is this, yeah, I would prefer a real bill spin to quarter.
Oh, a, a real, a real bill, I can I think I have a probably, probably about three times what we're proposing.
Right. But three times the, the value, but, um.
Be replacing this thing three times by the time.
Was this in the plan that we were shown of?
Yes.
At the time, did we know it was just a portlet?
Yes.
Well, okay, then I won't, won't revisit, I guess we're all having second thoughts about it now, but I guess we already saw it, and we're kind of, we're kind of, well, like, we're okay enough, so, okay enough.
Just to say that, you know, ten years from now, you know, he may have another project to replace it if it really doesn't work.
Okay, I would, and this is like one of these things that if you go to a wedding, outdoor wedding, kind of, they're kind of nice bathroom, yeah, certainly better than a portlet.
The library's there, and the senior center's there, yeah. All right. Other comments? Athletic field development.
Three years ago, um, we made improvements to Field One at the community center, that's the field closest to Route One. We worked with the Public Works Department, they went in and stripped off what little topsoil was there, re-graded, uh, we installed, uh, an irrigation system, and then put down seed and, uh, let the field sit idle for a year so that the grass could really take root. That has worked out really well. And we are proposing to do the same type of work on Field Two, which is the field that's kind of out behind the community center, so that, that's what this first project is, and you know, there, the, the field out back is just in terrible shape, there's not a lot of ground cover, and it's not even, um, or it's not level, uh, and it's not irrigated, so, um, you know, it, it tends to dry out, and it's just, it's not a particularly safe playing surface, and so we're proposing to, uh, again, do the same work that we did on Field One, I think, two or three years ago now. The other a part, uh, of the athletic field development is replacing the backstops at the community center, there's two backstops there. When we did the recreation master plan, there was a level of service analysis, uh, so the consulting team came in and looked at all of our recreational facilities and a, assigned a level of service uh, value, and the, um, those two particular backstops were assessed as one, which is below average, and it's primarily due to their age and, and their condition, and so we're proposing to replace the, the backstops, uh, t- last year, or maybe it was two years ago now, we did work on both of the, um, baseball fields. Uh, we, again, worked with Public Works and, and replaced, we installed a fifty-seventy uh, baseball field for, uh, Little League, and then also did some work on uh, a smaller field, and so we're kind of proposing to wrap up those projects with, we made the improvements to the field, and, and now we're making prove, improvements to the kind of support facilities, uh, that have been identified as below aver- or, yes, below average.
That much? All right. Noank Neighborhood Park.
No, there's a number of these projects in here that the town manager has, has zeroed out.
Right.
But they still remain in the capital improvement program, he's going to let the council decide.
Okay.
So we can go back in with this. Thanks, this.
He always got his, it's, it's next year, he's still got one for sure. Skip over things that have no value, but, but entertaining. Rather than having a blind side next year, if we decided we don't like it then. Any opinions on this? Noank Neighborhood Park.
Good idea.
Yeah, so we have, um, we have proposed making improvements to this, uh, park for the last couple of years, um, it was planned as a, a, as a two-phased approach. Uh, we've gone through the permitting process and, and have all the approvals. And, you know, it would include um, some walking paths, uh, a playground, and, uh, establishment of a, of an ornamental grasses meadow, it, it's currently open space, there are some fruit trees planted, the Noank Community Garden is up there. There is also, uh, some Christmas tree, a small Christmas tree farm that was planted up there, and we have been working with, uh, Human Services. Uh, each year, we'll cut down a, a number of trees and, uh, provide those to Human Services, and, and they make those available to families that may not be able to, ha- may not have in their budget, uh, you know, a Christmas tree. So we, we've been trying to u- utilize those trees a, as best we can, uh, and provide those to, uh, those families in need. So I think it would be a, a really nice place, uh, i- if it continues, if it moves forward.
Is there a plan this, this is
because it's Noank, so we're a little, anyway, so. We saw some, there was something out there, to see if all of this, but, on our department.
Well, it looks like, so he zeroed out the phase one work, but phase two appears to still be in the plan for next year, so, okay.
No, we don't get to see.
We don't, I mean, we don't get to see.
Yeah, I, I would, I would assume that if it doesn't get funded this year, that, um, we'd be asking for funds for phase one next year, and phase two would just get pushed out another year.
One question, um, is there still a community garden?
Yes, there is.
Is it, uh, what's in the space, does that take up? Just curious, approximately.
Oh, uh, I think there there are somewhere around thirty plots up there, uh, and we actually, uh, upgraded the fence last year a- around the garden, because the fence previously had fallen i- into disrepair, um, before it was turned over to be kind of managed by the Parks and Recreation Department, so people now pay to purchase a plot, uh, similar to the community garden at Human Services.
Right, that's where, thanks, that's all.
But, Steph, we're in this peculiar position of approving a project that we don't have jurisdiction of.
No, you're reviewing this for consistency with the P O C D, that's, that's what you're doing.
Okay.
That covers all.
And it covered, that covers Noank. All right, so is it consistent, even though we'd like more housing up there, but I suppose it's inconceivable. All right. Aquatics, I'm going to, no? Aquatic facility is, is zero.
Yes. Um, so, just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So is this just, are we really not doing anything, or is this just to see the town council on something? So is this just, are we really not doing anything or is this just to see the town council on something, in which case a number will show up?
But this, I think, is the third year that I have put money in uh to do a feasibility study. A- and this is based on feedback from the public uh in the twenty twenty-two recreational needs assessment, you know, the. Number one facility that people wanted to see is an aquatics facility and this. You know, going back, the last time we did uh updated the recreation master plan um. Two thousand and nine. Guess what the number one facility request was? Uh, an aquatics facility and so I've. You know, and I think going back even further, um. You know, aquatic, an aquatics facility has been the number one identified facility that the community wants. For probably close to thirty years and um, you know, we have. I I've I've put money in, you know, like I said, this is the third year in a row. You know, the, the whole point of a feasibility to study is to say, is to figure out exactly what a. What an aquatics facility is. Um. You know, s- some people may want giant slides, other people want lazy rivers, some people want. Just lap lanes. And so we need to figure out exactly what it is that the is gonna best meet the community needs. What it's gonna cost to build and what type of revenue it's gonna generate. And I think until. Until we have that information, we can't really say, oh, we can't afford. An aquatics facility or or whatever, because we don't have those numbers.
This identify a location or multiple locations?
Uh, we. There have been a couple of different locations tossed around. Uh, one is. Putting it adjoining to the, the community center, so the Fitch Middle School. The the other location that's been kicked around uh or proposed is actually uh. In the same uh on the former Claude Chester school site. Uh, so the proposal from the Athletic Fields Task Force. Was to have two fe- two full-size fields and then there was kind of a smaller space that. When the first proposal was put together. An aquatics facility was identified there. That has since been removed from the proposed plans. And it's now kind of a half field that would be used for for practice, but. You know, that still could potentially be a site. Uh, beyond that. I don't think there's been any others areas identified other than um, you know, there was. You're all aware of, um, there was a discussion with a developer about the Mystic Oral School and making renovations to that. Community or that uh facility in- including some aquatics, but. Th- those are, the two most viable areas at this point, I think, would be uh on the Claude Chester. Former Claude Chester school property or uh somehow connected to the uh community center.
I'm actually glad you brought this, even though it's a zeroed out thing, we're not doing it. I'm fully glad we have this discussion because I want to put on the record that. The idea of putting it on the Claude Chester site. And how it was shown and how people uh. Enjoyed that idea was that they were given two choices, a big, beautiful new building on the Claude Chester site. Or a little metal prefab building. Adjoining the uh adjoining and not even, not even connected to really, yeah, community center. So what they were voting, uh, the new building would be backed up by Henny Penny, so it really talking, big, beautiful new thing. But the way it was presented was if you want a new building. That's really gorgeous looking from the north side, not so much the south side, then Claude Chester is where it's going to be. So I want to make sure we're discounting the idea that it, that there was a vote taken informally. And a whole lot of people like Claude Chester location. They didn't, they liked the big, brand-new building. And I want to make sure that having it connected to, maybe spending the same amount of money, they did vote. But they did work approval of spending a whole lot more money on a big new building. We just took that money and put it at the community center. It had helped the community center and have a pool at the same time. So I want to make sure those are all included. And not just wasting our time saying, well, people really liked the Claude Chester site. That wasn't really the case. They were only given the two choices.
So I I do have a question about site location. Was there a study done or did we just choose from? Sites that the town already owns because Pleasant Valley was never discussed for an aquatic facility and. That entire district lacks town-owned recreation facilities. And I I would feel that we've done our our fair duty in getting housing out in that district, so perhaps housing at Claude Chester and. Aquatic facility over at Pleasant Valley, which has not been committed as far as I'm aware. So I guess I I just want to make sure Michael's question was answered. Will this, this feasibility study include a broader look at site availability? Different sites, even purchasing the sites if necessary? Or is it just to rework the two ideas that were already put up?
Oh, no, no, I, it it would include um an an assessment of. The the best location, um, you know. At this point, we've only been able to get as far as potentially two sites and. A- and that's been it. And you you know, that wasn't through any type of exhaustive search. It was available. Town space. You know, centrally located, it's, both of those areas are kind of in the geographic center of the community. Uh, of Groton. So i- yes, it would, the feasibility would also include. Identifying a preferred or preferred site locations.
I think that's the best. I mean, I I think this is a. Probably something that the town really would benefit from. And but I think also that identifying that site would get the community. Wherever it was, really behind it and maybe make this move forward in a. Better way if we could get past, you know, this is the theoretical, it seems like and. Maybe if.
Coming up since my daughter was swimming in the pitch. And it's like, um, sad to say, and I thought, I thought, Mark, you had some, a really nice choice one time where you had the big facility of Claude Chester. Cause I remember voting.
That was when I want to make sure it gets sort of evened out because the big, nice, beautiful facility looked great.
Right.
Bringing this back to the C I P, do you want to recommend to the town council to consider funding this project? Cause right now it's zeroed out.
You want us to vote on that? Make a list of things.
Consensus, we'll just put together. I think it's key.
First one that's come up that I believe is very important. And to our, Mark, I don't know whether you've looked, as we do in business a lot, co-marketing, co-partners. But have you spoke with Avery Point at all? Whether the town could potentially have access to their facility?
Oh, yeah, we, we have. Well, no, we have access to um. To Avery Point. That's where we run our swim lessons from. Uh, and I can tell you. We're s- between the Board of Ed for a swim team and what Parks and Recreation is doing. We're spending probably close to ninety thousand dollars a year for rental of space at Avery Point.
So no, my point, back to Deb was, I I involve us of the consensus to say. At some point, we need to bite the bullet here and and for the things that I've heard, this is, seems to be a very positive approach for the town of Groton.
Um, my only thing is we spend a lot of time talking about site selection and that's not specifically identified in this and maybe. But maybe we want to make sure that, you know, we add that note that we're looking for site selection and. For a broader context, when we talk about our P S P O C D rewrite, maybe we include something about aquatic facility sightings.
And that 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 site selection be neutral. Because the previous one was talking about the fields. I don't, by the way, do we want to leave room for something? But it should, the site selection should be absolutely neutral.
Years ago, there was the talk of having it fixed at the senior center when that was built.
And and as far as distribution of. Community District Four is by and large by population, the largest district in this town, so.
Well, there's district, but there's also personnel to ma- to staff. That's why the other part goes to having.
That was.
Set of locker rooms, one set of every.
More, more to the, to the comment about the geographical population center of the town. Highest density is up in District Four.
Let's get the Thames River there.
Yeah, we'll just pump in the water.
Yeah, so this was a recommendation that came out of the recreation master plan um to kind of come up with a schedule of. Uh, playground replacements and we are proposing. To spend money up at the Windward Passage Playground, which is in uh the Bailey Hill neighborhood. Um, again, that was one of the sites that there was a level of service analysis done and. It came back as uh poor condition, so we're proposing to make improvements to that park.
You there?
Yes, yeah.
We have a question on that. Actually, I just noticed just off the top of my head here, there's one for replacement of Stanton Farm. Playground. Hundred fifty thousand dollars for replacement of that.
Yep, that's.
That's my neighborhood. So I know Park and we have picnics there and we do all this stuff there. And surprises me, given the substantial construction that that was. I mean, this is very nicely done, usually pretty well maintained. Have uh replaced some platforms from time to time because that's all that seems to give out. I'm kind of surprised that it needs. A total replacement, in which case I'm wondering about the replacement for the others as in, as opposed to substantial repairs. Do they really need to be replaced? As a, a- assessment actually been taken of the value of just going in and replacing. Replaceable parts rather than coming in and putting in all new footers and everything else.
Right, so this is F Y E thirty-one. We're talking five years out. We're standing.
Twenty twenty-six, you're spending a hundred, so.
Y- yeah, and that's for a a playground that.
Right, well, I I I'm I'm working back. You're right, the the one percent farm, but I'm just wondering if in fact you thought said Stanton Farm. Then I'm just wondering, working your way back, was the same factors placed in there saying, well, they're old and miserable and rusty, therefore. Let's dig them all up and put them and make brand new or. Is it a matter of, I mean, even in the case of the twenty twenty-seven, the Tercentennial Playground. It's replacing specific things and not just digging the whole thing up and starting over again. So I'm just wondering if that same thought was given to the other much lower cost items.
The, the plan to, for Tercentennial Playground is to replace the entire thing.
Uh, right, that I understand.
Yeah, yep. What's that?
And that's because it's necessary to replace as opposed to fix?
Yes, yeah, uh, I I have made the comparison to playgrounds to. Printers or copy machines that we buy. So you can buy a copy machine for, or a printer for. Seventy-nine dollars and then when you go to get the toner. You know, it's almost as much as the, the printer itself. You know, we have been replacing parts on on playgrounds. The, the playground. W- one of the playgrounds at Claude Chester, um, there's thirty thousand dollars worth of. Money that needs to be spent in order to. Bring, in order to fix that up a- a- and um playgrounds to. Maintain them um are incredibly expensive, ridiculously expensive and. So we're looking at replacing playgrounds um. R- rather than, I mean, we, we fix them, you know, uh, as Hal said, we've, we've already made some replacements. At Stanton Farm and, you know, we'll continue to do that, but there comes a point in time where it just doesn't make. It doesn't make any more sense to do it.
Awesome. I'm all for playgrounds and I'll let somebody else worry about the money.
But my only point is that we're kind of going into some analytic, we're all starting to get in our jobs and everything else. We have the analytics of what parks are really being utilized. I mean, I'm not against. It doesn't appear to be a very dense neighborhood, right? It's a lot of money for a, what I would consider not that dense a neighborhood, so. Do you think you can, you envision anything like that, Mark, taking a look at the utilization and which, which of these? Which I know like aquatic planes, I see people all the time at that. How about these others? Are, are, how much are they being utilized? Or can you get to an analytics basis where you can make that determination, just like you've done at a one or one dot five on the other issues?
Right, um. Yeah, to be perfectly frank, I would love to have uh fewer. Parks or fewer playgrounds and have them um. More of like a a community playground in three or four different areas rather than having playgrounds scattered all across. But I I can assure you that those families that live in those neighborhoods would not appreciate the fact that. We're taking out their playground and where you could. Push a kid on a stroller or ride your bike and, you know, now we've got a playground that's, you know, three miles away. While operationally, that makes things in the Parks Division much easier. There's fewer to maintain, there's less travel, but. Again, you know, those folks that have grown up with, with that playground in their neighborhood are not going to be happy. R- regardless of the fact that. You know, maybe it's a community of thirty homes uh and there's a playground in there that um. It's pretty much being used only by those thirty families.
I know there was a document that I poured over. A while back, but isn't there like a master plan that you have for this stuff and? I mean, it seemed like Groton was meeting the. Needs. There were a few deficiencies, but it seemed like we were pretty good.
Yes, yeah, but in order to continue to. Meet those needs, we can't just turn our backs on, on our facilities and say. You know, because they continue to deteriorate and we have to have a plan in place in order to maintain those.
No, I'm all with you. That's fine. Good.
So. And couple, couple questions. So I, Kevin and I, I think we might have um been giving you some background chatter. Could you be more specific where the Bailey, the Windward Passage Playground in the Bailey Hill neighborhood is? I tried looking up on maps. I tried looking up on the town website. Could you please give us a little bit more context where exactly that neighborhood is?
Okay, so if you're headed towards. This, the subbase and you make a left-hand turn rather than going straight to go towards the Nautilus. You start going, and I'm sorry, I don't remember road names, but I can, I can. I could drive there, but I can't. Yeah, I could drive there, but I can't.
And that's, so I I figured out where we're at, uh, cause I, I had a, I had an idea. We're up here. So and that's owned by the town or is that owned by?
Yeah, it is owned by the town, but you, there's no. Yeah, there's no sign that says it's a town. I mean, if you, you could drive by it and not even see it because. It's down. Yeah, it's difficult to see and it's not well signed.
This is military. Right up here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Breakdown fr- fr- frankly, in terms of. The cost, which we really shouldn't get into. We tend to get wrapped around it. We really shouldn't be looking there, but. On a year-by-year pa- case per playground, it's not as bad as probably anyway. And I'm all for the idea of having lots of little local playground equipment things. My neighborhood, which went from, right now we're in a lull, but there are kids going to that playground absolutely every day. They walk there. They ride little bikes there, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have anywhere to pick my kids, my, my neighborhood, really.
That would be better. The adjacent neighborhood, which is on Judson, has a tiny little one on the other side. They can come to ours, but they have to cross Route One. On the other side, they. The adj- the adjacent neighborhood, which is on Judson, has a tiny little one on the other side, they can come to ours, but they have to cross Route One, the other side they come in there. So they're scattered, then there's the old Butler School, some playground equipment there, having those everywhere is a good idea.
That, that was my second question, so um I know that when Pleasant Valley shut down, uh, the playground equipment there got repurposed to a different site. And I'm thinking about the playground equipment that we do drive over and use over at Mary Morrison. Um, is there movement of perfectly good equipment from some of these facilities to some of these other facilities that need, like, are we repurposing any more of that anywhere or? Has that been considered?
Yeah, potentially, uh, it, it would depend on the age of the equipment and the condition of the equip, and the condition of the equipment. Um, you know, we do, e- every other year, we have um our insurance provider comes in and there are certified playground inspections and they do a complete audit of all of the playgrounds and identify areas of need. Um, and that's what we use to base our decisions. We use that information to a- as part of our, what we, how we make our decisions about what needs to get repaired and replaced.
And then last, last question, I know I, we had corresponded about it a little bit um about the outreach I've gotten from the community for fences around these playgrounds for um children with special needs who tend to wander or bolt, um, or just, you know, other little kids kind of running away. So in, in any of these considerations, is there consideration for including fencing around these parks?
You know, that's a great question and, and we, the only I'm just trying to think, I don't think there's a single playground.
Yeah, that's the complaint by families.
That has a, a fence around it. Um, I first became aware of this a couple of years ago when uh a family reached out to us, uh, they were utilizing uh Quantic Plains Park. And uh mentioned just exactly what you said, that um, you, you know, there's um families with kids that have special needs and that some of those kids uh tend to as you said, bolt or, or runoff and so um, we are, the plans for to replace Paquonic Plains Park or Tercentennial uh do include, would include a fence around there, but no, we have not made plans to put fences around other playgrounds at this point. Um, as we move forward with replacing, that, that's something that we could uh build into, build into the plan.
No, but that's, that's a good start, at least that's one of the more heavily utilized uh playgrounds, so, yeah. I, absolutely, yeah, yep. So thank you. More playgrounds are good.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, uh, again, thank you for adjusting your time, um, or adjusting my schedule, I appreciate it.
Uh, for the record, Greg Canover, Director of Public Works, um. One A is our annual uh allocation for uh road rehabilitation surfacing. Been a very successful program, um, after we um went back to CIPs for funding our roads from the bond that we did uh up until a few years ago. Uh, we're funding about one point three million a year um for these roads and, you know, we're getting caught up in a lot of our collector roads. This year, we're proposing uh several collector roads. Um, these are, we're heavily traveled, so we like to keep those you know, i- in better condition than, than normal, uh, small local roads. Now you see all these, um, just to refresh early memory, perhaps you remember, but every road we have inspected has a PCI number, which is a pavement condition index. It's a scale of zero to a hundred, hundred being a perfect road, girl, completely failed. You want to be about a seventy or above um. And, you know, on average, town, we were right around a seventy. So we, every year we take a look at, you know, where we are and it kind of identifies some roads we'd like to do. Uh, so this year, we're uh proposing uh North Pleasant Valley Road, which is and it parallels Route twelve, it's a fairly long road, so it's rather expensive, um, but it doesn't need to be uh done and also off of that is two short roads, Crystal Lake Road, the east end of it, and then Ohio, Ohio Avenue, they connect from North Pleasant Valley to Route twelve, so it just makes sense to do those at the same time. And Ohio Avenue, you can see it's a PC, twelve sets, pretty rough shape. The other two collector roads we're looking at is Lamb Town Road off one eighty-four and Shoeville Road, which is also off one eighty-four. Um, and then Godfrey Road in Mystic, um, which is has a PCI thirteen. So those are the roads we're proposing this year.
How does a road like Godfrey Road get down to thirteen? I mean, I'm just wondering if it had anything that, I mean, what part of it is bad? Is it where the nursing home was? Was the construction?
This is Godfrey, this is not that, that's, this is Godfrey Road, which is off of um Packer up to uh Cold Spring and Yetter Road.
Oh, okay, oh, so with this, all these projects are in the northern part of it.
Yeah, they're all pretty much, yeah. Yeah, North Pleasant Valley is in the northwest part.
Familiar with that, and the Crystal Lake Road, so those two, I'm, I'm gonna ask about those because we recently approved apartments at the uh, Crystal Lake and North Pleasant Valley Road uh access onto Route twelve. And we, uh, I wasn't part of the discussion, but uh there were sidewalks proposed in there and Mike, I guess when you rebuild these roads, are the roads widened?
Don't usually widen the roads, so, and if anything, we'll, we'll narrow them down to what we really need, cause.
That would be a concern for me there, that road is already kind of narrow, people do walk on it, I see people walking on it.
Pleasant Valley.
And they're coming down and walking to the base from Ohio and like that, that, you know, it's strange, but they walk right down the middle of the street. Um, so I would be concerned in that area there, you know, that we don't widen it so that I mean, you want to keep it safe, there's some bad hills along it and places.
A twisty windy road.
Uh, you know, so when you widen a road, then the cars go faster. I don't know, then, then we have to look at the sidewalks.
And can I understand that these, these go through the Complete Streets groups review or should they and they're not, or how, how's that working?
These roads do not, because it's just purely a maintenance shoe, I mean, you know.
Just repave, that's one of the, that's one of the, the place where we say, hey, wait a minute, when you put the stripes back on, should we re-stripe? That's one of the things that the Complete Streets does, with respect to having bring it down to eleven feet and allowing some room for someone to walk or ride a bicycle. So that's, I, I would think it's worth it for them to look at it.
Yeah, certainly.
So Greg, um, you look at something, I just don't know who owns different responsibilities for this, so I live on West Mystic Ave. An aquarium has come in and just kind of butchered the street, the gas company, et cetera. Art, do they own that responsibility for bringing it back to what it was, say, it was graded, I'm just picking the number at a, at a three, the three oh, point three or whatever it may be. It, it appears as if they've left it in far worse shape than they, is that worse?
They are actually going to be coming back this summer and re, and milling and overlaying the whole entire road. So like West Mystic, in fact, they're doing it all like Godfrey Road, which is by the, that nursing home there, they're doing that. One or two in there, so they're, we've acquired them as part of their permit that they got from us that they have to repave the whole road, so it'll actually be better than it was when they started.
That's great. You also had some, just the last question, some social media, looks like you can either call now for uh an improvement if you have, or a problem in town, but you're also doing an online or an app type approach?
Uh, it's just through the website.
The website, yeah, cause you've been great, frankly, everything that I call on at least is, just, it's a great office of response, so, real feedback.
I'll just say, I, when you were doing Flanders Road, this was probably two or three years ago, I pulled over to the side of the road and I was watching your guys and I was blown away by the way that they were working was fantastic, it was like, like the most efficient road crew that I've ever observed. I'm not kidding. Like, motors dropping stuff and, yeah, it was like, it was impressive, yeah.
Just a general question, in the letter that's in the very beginning of the package, they talk about actual improvements being major improvements or betterment of non-recurring nature of physical plant of municipality has differentiated from ordinary repairs or maintenance of a recurring nature. So does the town have a budget for like normal maintenance and then?
Yeah, we have an operations budget that's completely separate from the capital, you know, for like so tree trimming and uh painting line stripes, so we have to do on a more regular basis.
Road sounds like recurring maintenance.
I think they use, we use a five-year period, I think is what town has historically done, so if it's something that you know, we're not gonna repave a road every five years, it's gonna be every twenty years, thirty years, so that's why it's not considered a recurring maintenance type item.
Okay, so fixing a pothole, not CIP.
Right, it has to be, I think, over twenty-five thousand dollars in value and at least five years or more.
It was, it was a question I always had.
Ridge repair. This is just Thomas Road?
Yeah, this is just Thomas Road, we had, the state came in a number of years ago and then looked at our smaller bridges and Thomas Road, it's actually a box culvert, but it's because of the width, it's actually defined as a bridge under the state DOT. Um, so they inspected, there was some issues with it, with the guardrail system, with the concrete spalling, so last year we hired a, an engineer, they did all the plans, they got the contract, bid documents all set. We've got all our Army Corps deep permits already, so we're ready to, you know, put this out to bid, so we're looking for the funds to actually do the, the repair work this summer.
Is that, I, I mean, that's my neighborhood and I it's so narrow and the sidewalk that you put in along Thomas Road helps a lot. But once again, this is a, one of those uh, Grantford Manor, people walking over to Big Y, I see it regularly and that's a real choke, there's no sidewalk proposed on this.
Yeah, we tried a number of years ago to get a boardwalk along.
Well, it's the city, it's the line, right?
Yeah.
City take part in this, or is this just?
No, that we, the town, we put this in a number of years ago, so we kind of take an ownership of it.
Same pocket, I suppose, some of them, so.
Yeah, this project's just looking to repair what's there, not necessarily enhance and add side shapes.
Because it really could use a sidewalk. And a lot of people, the thing is that people go there and they go crapping and their kids running around, you know. Anyway, wish it could be better.
Just got to see the sidewalk plan, the proposed new sidewalk plan. That is, that piece in it? Yeah.
I haven't seen the plan either yet, so I have no idea. But I'll make a note that, that, you know, for a future project.
Possible gap. Well, that, this, there's no, I don't believe that the city brought any, I don't think that they have sidewalks going down, I think that what we did, it ends there and then people just kind of make, put their life in their hands till they get to Eastern Point Road and then there's no sidewalk up there, it's so bad, anyway. Thank you.
Underpasses, there's nothing for twenty twenty-six, but you're gonna be designing it for twenty twenty-seven?
So that's, you know, with the South Road.
This gets pushed out every year, doesn't it?
It's one of those things that's gonna be, I mean, you're gonna, you're talking about raising all of Amtrak for like miles and.
Is that road below mean high tide?
Floods constantly.
Not only flooding, there's holes in it, you drop your tire in, you know, I go up on the sidewalk. You break your tire.
Just for the design, at least we could have, if you want to have a, I mean, for a lot of these things, if you're gonna get any kind of outside money, you need to have a shovel ready project, so you have to have to design.
Yeah.
So I think, well, and this just gets pushed out every year, it seems like.
But even the design is.
Are they just waiting for a truck to hit it hard enough? Is that, uh, is that the plan we're going with? Yeah.
I mean, the thing to me is, it seems like something should, because that is a emergency uh, access for, you know, the airport or whatever, you know, because it's all I.
It's a long way around to get to there.
I mean, I guess you could go the other, like up uh Aquanic Road, but uh no, usually I get down there and then have to turn around and drive back and, you know, you've gone two miles. And then if you're in a hurry or it, it is an emergency, that's sort of a critical place and we should be doing it.
Or anything, I think we're suggesting that, that should be put, moved up the priority, at least for the design.
Yeah.
If it was the construction. And have it on the shelf for many years and that, and it doesn't take a whole lot to.
I mean, I'd rather get a design for this than a new golf bunker.
Racing the rail line going down is, I mean, at sea level rise, it doesn't seem like it.
Why not a conventional crossing?
Oh, Amtrak will never go.
Oh, like a level crossing?
Few places where there's on-ramp crossings.
School street.
Wish they weren't there, so. That's, that's just what's taking, that just slows down everything.
Right.
Slow down a fun of those.
If you can't go over and you can't go go under it, yeah, right, so going down, I, I mean, I agree, I think this should be moved up and be a higher priority, but I don't know if that's within our purview for our recommendation.
But you really need funding for a lot of things now, the funding, I think, is kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, the parts not.
Well, like Hal mentioned, if, if we want to look for.
That's just my point.
Yeah.
Road instruction twenty twenty-seven for Main Street, no way. Projects underway.
Yeah, the street's underway, we have actually public informationally next week on the preliminary plans.
Actually, we talk about that and not parking.
Well, there you go.
Oh, this is, those spaces across from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Greg, why couldn't we put that in twenty twenty, in fiscal year twenty-six versus twenty-seven?
Looked this in last year, but the council cut it, they wanted to send it to the Economic Development Commission, I believe, for review and I've never heard back from them, so. Do you recall that, Deb?
No, but you're absolutely right, I I know it has been on an agenda, but I don't know if they've actually made a recommendation.
Yeah.
Seems a very positive thing again. Since I seem such a, yeah, every time, if you already driven by there and had a truck. It would be better and you can give up the parking spaces and one of them is a police parking space that So it's twenty-seven, it's not.
This way you forget, be okay to proceed.
Doing the uh drainage watershed protections.
Be back and forth here tonight. Yeah, so the first one to a, over, this is the Quaker Farm Road Bridge, which is currently out of service. We have the plans that have been complete finalized, we've got all the permits, um. But when we went, got the funding years ago for this, the cost estimate was about one, just under one point five million, um, so this is this bridge is in the state local bridge program, which means the state will pay for fifty percent, the town pays for fifty percent, so our share was around seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Well, over the years that, you know, we have, took a while to get this project through. The estimate has gone up quite a bit, so our share now is about a million dollars, so we're seeking just additional funds to cover that difference, it's really all this is. The estimate has gone up quite a bit, so our share now is about a million dollars. So we're seeking just additional funds to cover that difference. It's really all this is for.
Oh, the funds were approved on your previous standard.
Just hired, we're in the process of hiring a consultant for. Gravel and Pearl Street downtownistic, um, we have one. It's working on Willow Point. Already and this sure haven't been working on too. So once we get. Some definite projects with some definite costs will. In here.
Are some of these places that are low lying? That have we ever like had any kind of consideration as to? You know, what happens twenty years from now? And that's investing things that are going to be under.
Especially like Willow Points.
But that was what.
From now, it's gonna be, yeah. Have to live there.
Yeah, right.
You look at the models, yes.
Yeah, so you just want, I wonder, you know.
We're looking at short term. Projects right now, you know, just to. The nuisance flooding that happened.
I just, I just wish that we could like look. You know, have the long view at some point and start thinking about. You know, what we are gonna do in this world.
Yeah, great. Are there any, is there any potential for federal funds there at all?
Uh, it could be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sure.
John Road. They're putting off for another year just designing.
It's, they're doing that. New section of culvert stuff.
That's been on the books for a very long time too, right?
Because it keeps getting pushed down too.
Will we ever see what, if there's a consultant study that examined the existing four turning geometry that, does the study just say, yes, it's bad, or they come up with some kind of proposal? It's your second paragraph there, that's a consultant stuff. That also examined the existing port turning geometry, so when fix the elevation, they'll also. Make that intersection work a little bit better. But.
Phrase has been in there for so long, I'd have to go back and see where the consultant study is, I don't even.
Just wondered, because that was. That one definitely could get a. Complete screw. For sure. Placement sidewalk construction. They're like an ongoing thing on here.
It's like a maintenance to replace.
When I look at these numbers, they don't seem like it's very much.
Um, it gets, I mean, it does get a lot.
Well, I I mean, I see this, you know, where we have this too, and it's like, it's really, I mean, if you. Look at these numbers, they're the same and they've been, I don't know what they, I think that they were higher than this in the past, that what you.
Seventy five thousand, been up to a hundred last year, so we're good.
Yeah, just, I mean, just with inflation, it means that we're doing less work every single year. Right? Even on a three percent or whatever it is, you're. Looking at, when you get out here, you're, you know, really only dedicating eighty thousand dollars. I know that we're not there now, but. I just wonder if, uh, because the thing is that this commission then has to. Demand of developers and builders to build the sidewalks or whatever, you know, replace sidewalks and. You know, sometimes it's difficult to, you know, we ask some to do it and others we don't, and it's kind of inconsistent what we're doing. But it's the way that sidewalks get built in this town.
Which is unusual. So it just, I wish that, it is, you're right, it's a hundred.
Well, I mean, that's what we're looking down.
Yeah, hundred and five hundred ten.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just take the. Miles of sidewalk that we have. Divided by the, you know, the cost of what it cost to build or repair a sidewalk, there's a number that should be spent every single year. Just maintain the status quo.
That's your operational budget though, right?
Well, uh, we have, no, we don't, this is. Uh, a little different because we uh hire contractors and stuff to this concrete sidewalk.
You seem to think it was pretty good in the years past, I know, asked, because I think I asked this question every year.
And there's only so much we can handle too internally managing these projects, so we have to kind of, you know. Even if you gave us a million dollars, I don't know if we'd go out and do a million dollars worth of sidewalk repair work, we just couldn't.
Well, I know that New London does the same thing and they replace a lot of sidewalk.
You know what their figure is?
I I I wanted several years ago, I thought they may have told me like over a million dollars. But New London sidewalks were in really bad shape and they're just going out, ripping out.
I bet.
But they, same thing, they have a contractor who does it. I just think that this is an important thing because it makes our job. You know, and developers and everybody else, if people want. Someone to build something and then you have to add in a. Twenty thousand dollar cost to the project. It's less, but I mean. I don't, I guess it just depends on who pays for sidewalks this town.
That might go to the economic development.
What's that? Do they have to sign? Rating, uh, no, we could actually, I mean, can get a. Somebody to come in and do that kind of thing, they could rate, you know, go.
Yeah.
People shout at me and mine all the time, so I.
Yeah, but I think that this, like a lot of this, isn't this if, say, a tree lifts a corner of a slab, right? Then you can cut it and repour it.
Yeah.
Level.
Smaller stuff, do ourself in house, but this is like, we went in just. Couple of months ago, did Judson Avenue and all those streets off there, there was, I mean, they were all bumbling, falling, you know, there was tripping hazards on driveway, but everything, so we just went in there and did a. All, you know, probably about sixty thousand dollars worth of replacement sidewalks in that neighborhood, so we kind of take big chunks of. Areas and time.
I guess that's what the difference is here. It looks like it's a maintenance number, but it's not, it's just a funding number for individual projects, right? That only come around every ten, fifteen, twenty years.
Right. Yeah, so those sidewalks we just did in Judson should last another twenty five, thirty years.
Is, are we gonna see another one that's for like building new sidewalks?
I have that in here, but town manager cut it out this year, so I don't have any funds in there this year.
Infill sidewalk construction, not doing it.
See, that's, that's also where I would say, you know, I mean, not that anyone's gonna listen necessarily to, but I I if people want. Developers to develop things. That is a, you know, something that.
Appears to be a weakness.
Well, it's not fair.
Yeah.
You know, it's not fair that you ask one person to do it and. We should really have like a. Fee in lieu of sidewalks so that people, you know, if they're developing, you're not building sidewalk, you contribute to a fund. Or so that everybody does it.
Like a subdivision fund.
Yeah, you know, we have ones that we say, no, we don't, you don't have to put it in because X, Y, and Z, it's too difficult, it's too.
But it isn't our plan that says you must come in unless. You have um a requirement from us that it's taken out, right? But the requirement is that you put it.
The baseline is that.
Well, that's true, but then some people.
They agreed, yeah.
Aren't, some people get away with.
I love, I mean, not getting away, it's not.
No, what I mean.
Needed, or it's in a place where you don't want it, but then. Then there's no money when you want them for where you need them, and here it is right here, zero, you know. Because there are places that we should probably be putting sidewalks in, reduces traffic.
Yeah.
You know, come off for better.
So our, so the sidewalks in our neighborhood are um woefully narrow. And because of the parking situation on those roads, people park on the sidewalks, so then you are forced off of the sidewalk into the road. On a blind hill to get hit by someone going forty up the crest.
Yeah.
Um.
Which is never good.
Which is never good.
Right.
So I don't know how much that uh this this would address that. What I'm thinking more of is like Tollgate, right? There's a lot of folks who walk Tollgate.
Yeah.
And that is not a safe.
Yeah.
What, and if I wanted to go to Cop Park, which is. The cop, the the park, the town on park in. In our district, I'd have to walk that across Route One. Across Tollgate, over to one eighty four, down one eighty four, there's no sidewalks there. That's not a safe route for me to try to walk to to get to Cop Park.
I was always surprised and. You know, especially my daughter, the butler and. You know, no sidewalks at the time, you know, then, you know, it's like school kids, it's like you know where the school is, that should be a priority.
Just so I can continue on that bent, though, given the amount of um apartments that we're putting over in that area.
Yeah.
Having accessibility through Tollgate. Uh, up to that that Route twelve kind of area with. All the shops and and everything, there's gonna be a lot more foot track of it, I can imagine, and if we're trying to encourage less car based uh movement. If we are saying that we have E B employees moving to these. Apartments, because that's where the demand is coming from, is from E B employees, right? So they're moving into these apartments and now they're not that far away, it's not, it wouldn't be that bad of a bike ride if we had safer roads to ride our bikes. From our new apartments to to our work locations, right?
Don't digress too much, that did come up in that meeting yesterday. Where we do have a whole new master plan for that, which we're guess we're gonna get to see at some.
I digress then.
That'd be great.
Sure, it does cover it, and I guess we're gonna.
Hopefully these two T B D become numbers.
Yeah.
Because we, I think that this is a need.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, once we get that. We're looking at that study, we will definitely identify some.
And some of it actually comes up as defined projects in the uh. In that study, in this thing that this document I get to see. This new plan actually comes down and focuses on certain projects, I don't know if it was there. I didn't get to that.
No, I I haven't looked at that.
So I think we. Might be covered, but we're still years out, but we might have a step up with this particular.
Okay, when you put together your budget, do you ever look at the plan of conservation development? Try to along to anything, not in there at all?
Yeah, I'm looking at like. You know, where some of the uh. I guess if there's. Identified areas to. Like put sidewalks and stuff, I don't.
It just seems like the last plan, this is my observation, my judgment, is a very amorphous plan. It was big, you couldn't execute on it, and I think one of the objectives we're having is is to ensure the alignment, the ability to execute. On a plan of conservation develops, and I love the, make sure that you guys are so important to us, a part of that.
It has different goals and like, you know, things identified this. What we should be looking at doing, that would be helpful.
Okay.
That'd be great, thank you. Back next year.
Up to.
Sam, when they were talking about backstops and stuff, you didn't put anything, any of your past knowledge and. Into anything there, did you at all? Give them a little consultation sheet or whatever.
They didn't ask me about that, but that backstop is the one that I played on uh in front of as a catcher in the minor leagues back when I was playing. It's over. It's probably due.
Over ten years.
Sorry to interrupt, but everybody, I know I'm supposed to be sitting right there, but I figured tonight was probably my night to uh. To be on this side for this, so I'm Clint Kennedy, Director of Technology.
All right.
From public schools, and I was late because I was leaving a board of ed meeting, another. Board of Ed budget meeting.
And I'm Sam Kilpatrick, I'm the facilities director for the board. So we're only talking about the items that are moving forward that will move it forward with the uh by the town manager, correct?
Starts on thirty one.
So thirty, starts on thirty one, uh, the first one would be Project E Fitch High School Manufacturing Center.
Page thirty five.
Um, thirty five, yeah.
Yeah, so we have been working, the superintendent uh and administration at the high school have been working with Electric Boat. Uh, to develop a uh. A work program which would actually create a machine shop uh at the at the high school. Uh, in the garage area of the building. Uh, and so the uh, these are funds for the estimated for the uh. Engineering study uh plans and specs specs for that for that project. We did take a tour of a. A similar project in in Rhode Island uh that E B supported up there, and as you know, um. Blue collar workers are harder and harder to find. Uh, and so it's important that we in our school district uh try and provide those opportunities for for kids who want to work in that area. So. That's why we have the hundred thousand dollars in for that engineering plans and specs.
Glad. So I have, I'm really glad because I think we all knew of this having shop in schools, but we also didn't have a grasso tech down the hill. Makes it a little crazy that what do they have that looks exactly like this? I know it's the state as if you're not the state, they're the state, and there's this guy, but. It's not something we should be happy about.
No, with with the uh, with with the program that they have at the high school, this uh work, this. Uh, school to work i- is also part of that project uh of that program, so it's, and and kids. Um, need to participate in a lot of different things and they may be taking college uh. Classes there and still might be have some interest in machine shop or or other areas like woodshop or things like that too, so.
I just. Like to vent my aggravation that we're not just sending them down for an afternoon. Uh, I think Grass O Tech has a music program, why would they have a music program when you have Fitch up the hill with spectacular music program? Right, so it was crazy implication because of some. Maybe the the total number of ball fields was probably correct, but but the uh. Uh, for for having these different programs, walking distance from each other, where one excels and the other one is is not good at all. Doesn't make a lot of sense, so I'm all for the design. But uh.
We asked that question in the past and there's not crossover. Fortunately, same thing on culinary, right?
Right, oh, absolutely, right, and and there absolutely should be, it's, I always hear, well, that's the state program, well, I'm sorry, we live in the state. And so I think it would be nice to voice our frustration that these. We have the perfect situation to have these conjoined. And we're just not doing it and actually doing a workaround for it.
The tech schools have actually developed a program where they offer some of these classes um in the evenings to uh public school kids. So they they could actually take classes after school or in the evening, some of these other programs. Um.
At Grasso?
We haven't had it at Grasso yet, but the Prince Tech and some of the others in the Hartford area have already developed that, so it's it's moving through the tech uh. Tech schools.
Water heaters.
So um. Water heaters are unfortunately only ten years old, however, one we did replace last year and the other one. Um, is uh kaput, so um if the one that we have online now goes, uh, we close school down without hot water, so. Pretty important to uh to replace that as soon as we can.
Page thirty nine.
We're waiting until twenty six to replace.
As soon as this is approved by uh through the C I P, we would start moving to get that ordered, so.
Portable boilers that you can rent or own.
Yeah, the the um. These water heaters are are essentially a vertical boiler in in essence, it has tubes inside of that and they're about eight foot high.
Yeah.
Um, probably um nine or ten feet around, so they're fairly substantial, I I bring in Collins and Jewel to actually set the. Set the unit down into the boiler room. Uh, so.
I think what you're talking about is.
Yeah, no, I mean.
Disaster.
If there's a disaster.
Yeah, generator, generators for sure, I haven't. I suspect there would be somebody with boilers somewhere.
It would be days out, no, certainly they wouldn't do it.
Uh, thirty pitch thirty nine, please. Soccer upgrade.
Thank God, Dr. Kennedy is here to talk about those.
Ask my colleague, this Belvin who on the town side, because this is a bit of a joint effort, so.
Running on cloud or servers?
Currently it's running on servers and we're discussing moving to the cloud.
So just, do you want to try to just do the big picture, then please, by all means, correct me, um, so there is. Quite a bit of conversation on the Board of Education side about upgrading the financial system that we're currently using. Current system is e-finance, which is owned by Power School, which also makes our student information system, there's some great synergy. Uh, if we just put a box around Board of Education. Um, Board of Education has been discussing it, I know the. Town Council and uh Mr. Board of Education has been discussing it. I know the Town Council and Mr. Burt have been discussing what does it look like in a world where we have a single financial system for both the town and the Board of Education? So kind of unifying across Groton. Certainly the Board of Ed thinks it's a good idea. I don't mean to speak for the town side. The town thinks it's a good idea. We would be moving to, the proposal is to move towards the munis platform, which is currently run by the town. And we have embarked on a bit of journey to understand what the benefits would be financially as well as functionally to combine those two. So this really represents that first cut at what it would look like to do that. Now, we are in midstream as far as getting into details of of what that combination looks like. Previously, when I was the Director of Technology in Branford for Branford Public Schools, I was part of a two-year process that did exactly this. We moved from a third party that the Board of Ed used to the town's munis side. So I've been part of this before. I believe you said there are thirty seven municipalities in the state of Connecticut that have that setup, town, Board of Education together on the munis platform. But I think that's really, really the overview of what we're trying to do.
Currently, our munis system is an on-premises solution. So we host our servers here, Town Hall. In order to integrate the Board of Ed into the system, we would have to fund a cloud migration. Because we cannot integrate their systems while hosting it on premises. We are deciding what would be best financially for the town to move to the cloud first or to finish the implementations that the town has already started and then integrate the Board of Ed afterwards. There are a number of expensive pieces of software that we can cancel if the town completes their migration. So we're doing some calculations and estimates on timelines to figure out what would work best financially for everybody.
Can I just ask what this has to do with? Like, I understand some of these projects would have to be something that we would look at, but is this really something that we should be even? I know, sorry.
Yeah, it's a fair question.
Very supportive, right?
Additional building space for servers, okay.
We're not asking for it because we've.
For reduction in building space because you don't know? So much for this consideration. I mean, it sounds like a good idea.
Your points will be a P O C D.
Yeah.
And that's why this to me doesn't.
I don't got a perfect.
I.
Support them.
It's a good idea, right?
We can save money. We have better consistency across how we do budgeting for the entire town of Broton.
Do you have like a rough order?
That's your recovery components to it. So.
Is there like a rough order magnitude of how much we'd be saving with this conversion? Hundreds, millions, thousands?
It would be most likely what in the range of about six figures per year as opposed to having two separate systems.
Yeah.
So six figures a year to be spent on playground maintenance.
Sidewalks.
Or bunkers.
Not bunkers, not bunkers.
Please, that's even taking into account the cloud cost.
Yes. So certainly there are substantial costs, but you know, our current system is part of a larger multi-year contract that we pay for for Power School overall, which again is student information system, learning management system, finance system and so forth. So that's why I hesitated on an exact savings because we're kind of pulling this out of a multi-year contract, but certainly have the hosted version as a single entity for all of us would have a significant cost savings overall.
Good.
And I think.
Yes.
Perfect.
And the cloud was just a migration to start. I presume that's where the DR comes in as well, right? Yeah.
Good. It's great.
Good job.
The current public address system at Fitch High School is exactly one year younger than I am. And I turn fifty next month. So it would, there is a nineteen seventy six original install date on that machine. We have done our best to keep it moving. We're coming, kind of coming to the end just because of the age overall. We also now have a more a modern voice over IP, digital phone system. For security concerns, obviously, we need to interface phones and speakers and the PA system, et cetera, et cetera. So I have been able to find one vendor in the state of Connecticut that still stocks some of the parts. We had a lightning strike about eight months ago and we had to have emergency repair. It is housed kind of in the in the upstairs in the back. If you're standing in the 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 very back auditorium and you look straight up, house back there. Anyway, it is time. And we've done this. We obviously have more modern ones in the new buildings that we have and upgrades. This has been missed. So it is time to do this.
We bet on you, Clint, in order you would outlast the P A's. Here it seems like I'm the.
Doc Wood? I I hope so, yes. He doesn't get.
Dr. Kennedy doesn't get the calls when we have a lockdown drill or something, but I do get the calls to find out that there are actual areas within the high school that don't get those messages now. So again, it's pretty critical.
Mostly in the old section of the building.
Yeah, nothing.
Hire somebody to run around yelling. Video cameras.
Okay, so this is around three and this was a last minute later addition. As you are, I'm sure all aware, we have had some security issues and concerns across the town related to the schools and so forth. We have recently completed, I believe we discussed this in the past, so I'll do a very quick refresher of kind of a a three-tiered cake, if you will, where we have a new video server, if you will, a centralized system that that pulls all the recordings and houses those also provides real-time access to cameras across the entire district. Prior to that, we had school-based systems. Now we have a different base system that's cloud in the cloud backed up and so forth. It also provides better access for the town and city PDs. Second layer was we added additional cameras where we could salvage the old cameras, repurpose them and then added new. The third layer is a mutual link system, which is an immediate response system, which allows us, if a panic button is hit, an open channel opens up on computer, cell phone, what have you, that pulls in building administration, any SROs, all security officers we may have onsite as well as town or city PD and it gives you a footprint of the building, the cameras that are located where in the vicinity of where that panic button is hit as well as voice and text-based channels so that the first responders, as well as those who need eyeballs on things, can have immediate access. So we're really excited about that. We're at the final testing phase of that. So that was our three-tier cake. In the review of all that, in in light of some of the more recent concerns, we do our missing holes in many of the external components of our schools. So we have really good coverage for the most part internally. We continue to suffer in some of those external places. Again, it was highlighted with some of what's been in lately. So this was part of a discussion between city and town police departments. Mr. Burt was there, Board of Education Administration and so forth. And he suggested that we put a line in for to go after some of those additional cameras to fill in many of the external holes. Perfect example is at Thames River Magnet, you know, the the playground kind of stretches to the south, I believe, directly away from the building. So we have really good coverage right by the building and that first kind of component right there. But additional playground as well as that basketball court that gets a lot of use outside of school time and so forth, we have almost no coverage for that. In that case, I need to go after a solar powered camera that also then connects wirelessly back to the building and so forth. So we're going after some of those projects so we can really build out the security camera capacity across not just the building footprint, but also the campus footprint.
Right.
These cameras aren't, they're like limited to who can.
So, right, it's. Fair question. The only time anyone other than Board of Education employees, admins to these cameras would be if an if a emergency panic button is hit and that automatically pulls in police department. Other than that, no.
And do these record?
Yes.
Yeah.
Twenty-four hours and.
They do. Yep. And they all, many of them are also have night vision on them as well.
I'm on them all the time looking at events. I I just had a call today from a parent who had her car hit in the parking lot at the Groton Middle School. Needless to say, that particular area isn't covered by by a camera, but.
Thank you. It's almost like, yeah. Hence we're here.
So I wasn't able to verify it, but.
Thank you. The technology and it's getting much cheaper. I just bought some.
Yes, the ca- cameras are getting cheaper. Storage obviously has gotten very cheap over. So we 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 change policy semi-regularly as far as the amount of that we capture and for how long and so forth. But yeah, the new system, Doc Wood, is working well, except a few holes. So this is really about filling in those holes as they exist now.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
Great. Thank you.
I think this is the one night of the year I get to recuse myself.
No, I did want to say, though, I was here for Mr. Berry's presentation of, I I was surprised I didn't hear anybody ask the question, is it really bunkers that need to be repaired or do the golfers need to approve again?
No, the golfers are bad. We know that.
It's not easy to get out of that bunker. Have a good night. Thanks.
Public buildings.
Planning, they got to put all my sections one right after the other.
Find out, great.
The wastewater at the end, it's like.
Be going.
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
Well, forty-three has one next to it, so.
Yeah, so not not forty-three, not forty-four, forty-five.
Certain part, correct?
Forty-five, Town Hall Complex. I mean, Sutton Park doesn't have anything this year.
That's true. But I think we'd be okay with that. Sutton Park West Road building, that's for next year. That's just the modification to.
There's one in the far back where the baseball fields are.
Forty-five, the Town Hall Complex.
Two projects here. The first is the the traffic calming pedestrian improvements to the parking lot between Town Hall and the community center. It was a lot of kids that get dropped off there for programming and stuff, a lot of even during the day when Town Hall's in use. So we're parks and rec dusts to look at doing some traffic calming there. So we've put in some speed tables, some speed humps, changing some islands around. And I don't believe, it's been a while since we did this plan. I don't think we've actually come to you for E and Z site plan approval. So we'll have to do that, right? So you'll see the project again, but that's this is for. And the second one is.
It's that little heads up. Especially considering this, the small areas we're talking about, I would think that the physical speed calming things rather than pumps and bumps might be, like go for them first and see how that goes. Because nobody minds having to go through little barriers. Everybody minds going over a bump or a hump.
And what's the consideration on like snowplows?
The plows heck can't stand them and.
Right.
Yeah, they do. You know, they do. The plows do not like them so much, but they do work.
Absolutely. They do work. You can do all kinds of things that work and I would start with the things that the islands or whatnot first and see if that works. Rather than just go to making people more miserable.
And the second project is here is the there's a curtain wall system outside the old cafeteria, which is a multi-purpose room now that's pedal panels and glass. It's rusting and falling apart. It really needs to be replaced. So we got some design funds in here for an architect to do that design, couple with some construction cost estimates for, we'll put in for next year.
This next year. Maintenance stuff. Look at the library.
Whatever they want. That's my only comment.
It's not, it's not, it's not this year. Just one, if anybody had any heads up for next year.
I have no comment.
Same with Town Hall, why don't we make the fleets and fleet and roads, street, which is just planning. Okay with that?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, twenty. Thank you, Raj B.
This is the, our twenty bay storage garage where we put a lot of equipment and trucks and stuff. The roof is original to the building, just from nineteen eighty-five. So we're looking to replace the roof. We have designed funds approved last year. The architects are working on the plans now and they've given us an estimate. Which is three eighty. Replacing that roof. Built up hot asphalt with stone on it. So.
Will it be a metal roof?
No, it's a flat roof, so it'll just be.
Yeah, it'll just be.
Like EPDM or something.
Yeah.
So will be listed?
I don't know if it'll still be listed. I don't think so.
Anybody have any comments for the J P S?
Oh. Didn't know if anybody even uses, so it's a house.
There's no caretaker there. And I know the library's done a couple of programs there, but other than that, just kind of keeping it. Caretaker mode.
It's not really. I never see anything there.
No, nobody's there now. Used to be a caretaker. They used to have all sorts of programs and stuff. Yeah.
It's really quite interesting inside.
Well, at some point, we're looking into the value of making it back into a thing. A little, little some more, little work on the spice house, Spicer House clubhouse?
This is to just a little bar. Yeah, it's a little the rowing bar where they keep all the shells and kayaks or whatever they have there. It's it's pretty. It's in pretty bad shape. And so we had some DECD grant funding, which we got sixty thousand to replace the roof and do some siding repairs, but after we looked at it, we got some cost estimates, we thought that we needed, we need some more money to get just to get the job done and get it all repainted. So that's what this money is for.
Anyone want to comment on the?
Well, it seems like we're getting a lot of car washes in town.
Drive that truck right over there.
Maybe we have.
Yeah, this is just funds for repainting the art building, which is the old caddy shack, which is right next to the clubhouse on Plant Street. Doing some minor repairs to the exterior of that building.
Least buildings.
This was requested by the Groton Ambulance Association. The town owns that building that they're on on one seventeen, but we lease it to them. They are responsible for the maintenance, but they've requested that the town fund some minor exterior repairs and to repaint the entire building. So that's what this project is for. And the council can, at their discretion, pay for projects for this.
The Groton Ambulance Association, so if I get that ambulance, they they charge me, right? They're for profit. As I understand it.
That must carry a soup is non-profit.
I thought it was a very expensive nonprofit.
Well, I don't know who gets all the money, right? But you get, if you get taken by an ambulance, you get a flat rate bill and you get billed for the technicians that were inside that ambulance. I know when I did once.
For your insurance.
Wasn't a joyride, but it was like twelve hundred dollars or something. It was very expensive. My only point is if if it is a for-profit, we could just love to see the town council say, I think you guys should pay for it.
I mean, also consider if you get called, if they come out and you don't take the ride.
Yeah.
You're, nobody's paying for that. The time of the technicians, the vehicle, that. And having sat on the RTM Community Development Services Committee for for a while, chairing and doing their their requests. They run a tight budget. They really do. There's there's a high number of calls that they just show up to and then don't end up getting a chance to bill for because folks wave them off for, you know, whatever reason.
And I think this is too an important community service that's, you know, you gotta be there and someone's got to pay for it.
And I mean, it's it's really not that much in the grand scheme of things. And it's our building, right? It's the town's building.
Right, and I care pays for it all.
I'd be experienced that.
Right.
A couple of rides.
Okay.
Now, I mean.
We'll get beyond that. Just.
So the the roof at the.
No, no, I appreciate it. It's like a lot of stuff. If, no, if some, if it's for profit, then it should.
It's a nonprofit.
So the co-op?
It is nonprofit. Like they made a profit on me.
I'm ignoring their sidebar conversation about their their medical bills. The the knowing aquaculture cooperative building. Um. What? The town hasn't spent anything on that building since two thousand and six, when it possessed it from the state. You've been relying on the the occupants to do most of that building. Maintenance upkeep upgrades. Is this the first time that they've come? To us for for any. Money to do anything to that building. Alright, so I worked in that building. There's a lot of work that needs to be happening on that building. Like significant even safety issue kind of work. Um, so the roof, great start. But has there been any other requests that maybe weren't considered or?
What's for me?
This is the first one that came through? That's interesting. Interesting.
Which building is it?
The knowing aquaculture cooperative building down down right at the, you know, bottom of Main Street, knowing.
Yep. Maybe they don't know that they can ask.
I think. They they've put a lot of their own.
I mean, that's an important.
Um, like hundreds of thousands. Were into a a walk-in refrigerated space for their product. Um, significant money spent out of pocket for the dock repairs. I'm all in favor for that one, too. Town needs pitching on that.
Police, just call police.
This is for design work for basement repairs. Uh, there's quite a few areas of the brick and the concrete that are. Spalling, water starting to infiltrate the building. So we need to address that. And then also the. There's various uh ages of roofs up on the building. One's actually, I think, original from nineteen seventy-five. So we're kind of replacing all that roofing. This would be just for the design and construction would be next year.
This building, Town Hall Annex. Till next year.
I I got a question. On the golf course one, when you're ready, Mr. Chair.
Of course, one.
Yeah, that's fifty seven, next age.
Oh, well, that's fifty seven.
Two hundred and eighty. Wait, I skipped over. There's not.
Make sure that I'm looking at the second year after, so. Okay, with the Town Hall Annex. Which is more just roofing again, no?
That all, because I thought they had problems with it.
This section of the building, just a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And seemed to resolve the community issue, but we're talking, this is for the employees area.
New bigger office.
Seriously, there's two, there's two different.
I get complaints all the time from Deb and John.
Yeah, there's some offices that freeze. There are others that just.
Double the money.
You know, re optimizing, this is a rip out, replace the whole thing.
Yeah. Yeah, the equipment's getting to be to that age where it's, you know, it's almost twenty years old.
Are these uh issues related to the age of the equipment or is it the? Design?
Probably more to the design, I think. Original design.
Better handle on a design so we can keep them.
Yeah, it's like the, the equipment here was size too big, so it never ran. Um, so we put in smaller stuff.
I know that's critical with AC is that, I mean, you can't make them too big. That's as bad as having them too small.
Designed it for like this room being filled with a hundred people, you know, twenty-four seven almost. It's ridiculous. There's nobody ever in here.
I think they took in hot air or something like that.
Outside area, you have to bring in per code and all that stuff.
I I got it. I'm with you. I'm with you. Alright, so here's my question. Wait, yeah, yeah, sorry.
He's so anxious.
I just. Golf course ones. So I know we had a conversation. Oh, it's a break even. Alright, so this one's two eighty. The other one we looked at was two oh seven. I know there's a couple hundred of that two, you know, two hundred thousand. We're there. At what point do we kind of add all these up instead of spreading them across multiple accounts and go? I mean, I know it's not our purview, the amount of dollars, but I mean, mine. How? Okay, whatever.
I think the point back is that it begins. You add get.
As an aggregate.
These piecemeal.
Yeah. So look at them.
I would like to see that if this is truly, you know, self-sustaining. I mean, why is it any of it appear on prayers?
Well, could consider this. So these are just the capital improvement plans. There's other money still in the regular operational budget to support the golf course. In addition to and above the CI. It it's not maybe, it is the operation budget.
The people that are running it.
There's, there's costs that we pay for far perf. For part fours, like the. Not just the building, but we pay additional costs for part four as well.
Well, at one time, look at it.
And so.
Yeah.
I know there's a lot of fans of that golf club, but there's also a lot of things this town keeps saying that we want and we need for safety for. For environmental considerations and we can't afford it. We gotta push it off. We push it off. We don't put into our land. Banks. We don't put into our our different improvement banks and then. Spending half a million dollars on. Bunkers. Three million dollars on irrigation.
That's when you should do the math and present up to the council because that's, that's where it comes. We're just saying.
A bunker number that was. Was almost a half a million.
Over year, year over year. I do recall. I made this hissy fit at that time as the chair of that committee. Yeah, I recall.
It's hard to know. You know, these kinds of things can, you could argue with that. This is uh. You know, a benefit to the town that it attracts a certain kind of resident that is.
I have asked for economic.
I get it.
EDC should do an economic. Yep, they should do an economic impact study because I've been told that the golf course attracts people to all of our local businesses.
It might be true.
It might be true.
But certainly, nobody's getting a job here because they have a good golf course, you know, it may be an added perk. Or something, but. Nobody comes here.
Going to our part, it might be among the reasons people would like to.
I think it is an asset.
Within a radius around the golf course.
So are, so are.
I look at a beach and I look at a golf.
And playgrounds and. Sidewalks and all those. It's just like. Yeah, but where, what do, what would this commission prioritize? I think is what you should probably ask at some level and.
It's moving right along.
I can get Liz back, I think.
My district.
Another one here.
Alright. I don't mind.
My point is actually.
Requesting funds this year for developed plans and cost estimates to extend the sewer main. Up one seventeen to Center Grotton. Economic development, because it's a costly proposition. So we want to have plans ready for if any funding comes available that we have. Excellent.
I'm ready. Mike in.
We're working with a very similar project, right?
Right, like housing up there.
We like this one. Where does the uh non-sewer area extend to in the north?
West runs in the sewer service area. It's shown as red, like services needed. Um.
There were some areas uh.
I think it's east and west of it might be the non-sewer.
Gave it up when they moved this, the the main line to the Thames River, I think, and it left. Long time ago. Yeah, sewer avoidance area, that's what it is. So is this just going to go to one eighty-four but not down one eighty-four?
This is just to look at, getting the sewer up to the, you know, across twenty-four to, you know, that large. Developable parcel. It's on.
That, that is right now, none. There's nothing up there. Is there water up there?
Water, but no sewer. Oh, that sewer ends. It goes past the Marriott. Little ways, then it stops there.
I just don't know building up there. I saw it, that sewer.
It's much more valuable, right?
The amount of sewer put up there would would assume some significant development because I think we have that in. That's your plan.
Yeah.
Not just gas station.
Major mixed use.
That there's a lot of uses that. Can't use it, multifamily.
Absolutely.
Hotels, anything like that just cannot.
That should, that's what I'm saying. That that should have a very dense usage up there.
Yeah, I agree.
Pump station.
Every. Uh, year, we're trying to look at a new pump station to kind of upgrade because the pumps are getting, you know, they're getting to the age where we gotta do some major. Pump replacement, electrical replacement, go to newer. Modern equipment. It's more energy efficient. So we're looking at the uh. Designing for the little Gibraltar pump station, which is off Cedar Road. In uh West.
These all have a little generator. That other works.
Has their, yeah, they all, all the uh pump station.
What's their capacity? How long do they run after the power goes out?
Um, generally, they have about a thousand gallon tank, so I'm gonna say maybe. Four or five days, something like that. You know, we would have the ability to obviously. Go around and refill the tanks.
Such a disaster.
I don't know. We need that mum for coke stuff.
I was just saying this was important. I have to recuse.
And then treatment facility.
This is funds to. Replace and repair a failed mechanism on a primary clarifier. It's part of the wastewater. Treatment train, the primary fire does all the big tank that does all the major settling of the solids and. Had a structural failure and needs to be replaced.
Okay.
There are things that we discussed tonight that you would say. What would be like a free to. Make a short list of what you think are. The most important things that we've talked about.
I like this, the sidewalks. More infill sidewalks.
And you don't feel comfortable with the numbers that you're working.
Yeah, well, the infill be the.
Oh, yeah.
Do project by project. Those are um. You know, and then obviously, you know, the roads, getting those done. Rehab of the roads.
I pulled this one out, the. The uh sewer line for structure. You know, I think that's important. And I mean, obviously, some of these things are. The the treatment facility, things like that.
They're all, yeah. Some of the, yeah.
There's no argument, but if.
No.
One more.
Stuff like the roof replacements. I mean, those are.
Yeah, no, I, those are some things you can't ignore, right? Put off, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Technology needs. Well, it's like sixty.
So, this is my first committee meeting as director ever.
You're asking that we.
No, grill me by all means, totally fine. Uh, so I can speak to uh seven Alpha, seven Charlie and seven Delta. Um. If twenty twenty-six, we're hoping to upgrade our Microsoft three sixty-five licensing. To enable more collaboration across different teams uh in town by incorporating products like Teams, SharePoint. OneDrive and shared storage uh so that people can work. Here, people can work from home as long as it doesn't interfere with any union uh contracts. Uh, it it it'll allow for more flexible. Work. Um. We have some network battery backups that need to be replaced as well. Um, they're just reaching the end of their lifetime. And it is more cost effective to replace them with newer units than it is to renew the maintenance on them. And generally, uh, we also have some funds for ongoing server hardware and software maintenance. Uh, alongside the three sixty-five licensing, we'll likely have to bring on a different. FOIA software to manage that data uh so that we can easily search Teams messages and things like that. Um, do you have any questions on that?
We don't have any Teams now across.
We are not using Microsoft Teams. No, uh, we're not, we don't even have the licensing for SharePoint and OneDrive. We. Only have our email with Microsoft three sixty-five.
So when you come forward with the request for, um, and I worked for Microsoft for a while, I know. Um, do you have a lot of training built in or is that in a different bucket than your? CI for your infrastructure manager coming forward today? Because it needs a lot of training. It's wonderful.
Yes, part, part of this is getting somebody on board to implement SharePoint and OneDrive. Um. It's nothing that we're going to do immediately. So there's certain things that will gate. Uh, you can choose different modules that you deploy with the licensing. So it it's going to be a gated approach to make sure that we don't overwhelm everybody and to make sure that we have policies in place. To ensure that it's deployed properly. Um, if you don't deploy OneDrive properly, for example, uh, it will prompt users if they want to. Move all of their documents to their OneDrive account. Um, so there's, there's policies to put in place on the server side to control a lot of that behavior. So it it'll be a staged rollout.
Now with Teams, which is seems like it's been, you know, building block technology for ten years. So you just, that's hundred percent necessary.
Yeah, absolutely. I can't believe the town isn't using it right now. I'm shocked.
Greatest collaboration tool that ever made, right? Build your own, what you do with it, you build your own, that you have a team, say it's planning and zoning, and you get to share everything on that team. You don't have any centralized stuff. Technology experts like David, David Roy, you you build out, you don't have to worry about an IT director telling you what to do, go it out itself. It's very collaborative. It's very self-driven.
As long as it's implemented correctly, because there's, there's, there's a. The opportunity to do it wrong and allow the rampant creation of. Teams that don't make sense. Um. People may not understand what they're doing when they're adding teams. Uh, so so there's, like I said, some policies to put in place before that rolls out. Oh, yeah, yeah, there would, there'll definitely be some policing, but um, that's alright.
The idea would be to move um town meetings off of Zoom and give up our Zoom licenses and do it through Microsoft.
We haven't discussed that yet.
I like that platform better than Zoom when I do my meetings, Microsoft. So that's what I use for my state work.
Yeah.
I do prefer Teams, but uh we'll have to involve Sean as well uh in the AD department and really have a good conversation about what direction we want to go for the, the teleconferencing. So. But we'll definitely have the opportunity to do that. Yeah. Uh, let's see, uh, project seven Bravo is, has already been implemented. I'm not uh. Too involved in the document scanning process at this moment. Project seven Charlie is the uh E I, E I M S acquisition, which is the Munis software. Um, so this is a funding we're requesting for in financial year twenty twenty-six is to finish the. HR and payroll integration to begin. To fund the uh work orders and migration, uh E A M Enterprise Asset Management. Currently, the software we're using is almost a hundred thousand a year. So being able to cancel that will, will take a big bite out of the budget.
Yes.
Uh, but again, those. Those figures may change as well depending on when we roll out E A M. If we do it before we. Migrate to the cloud or if we do it after we migrate to the cloud. Uh, I have budgeted for the larger number. So. And then uh. Seven Delta, the IT security plan. Um. We're going to uh. Review. Review the services that the town provides. We're going to rate them as to how critical those services are. Uh, we'll investigate whether or not there are backup procedures in place to provide services and then we'll be able to establish a priority. For service restoration in the event of a cyber incident. You would think that things like public safety might be the most important to restore, but surprisingly, they actually have a lot of paper backups. So it may not be the first thing that we need to address when it comes to disaster recovery and incident response. The funding will be for some outside help to. Get that plan established where we need it to be.
Breach this year, was that on the Board of Education side or?
Town was not breached. Um, I I don't know. What happened? I I did hear that there was something that happened with Board of Ed and I think it was last financial year, actually.
Well, I was never identified exactly what what that breach was.
Uh, yeah, I don't know if it's that one, but Power School, which. School system uses it. That was like a national kind of like.
I I I remember I started here in February, so I haven't been here very long and I I wasn't the director until August. I've been here a year, I've been the director for about six months. So I remember hearing rumors about a compromise at the Board of Ed when I started here, but I didn't hear much about it.
Yeah, so our only push on the cyber thing with your predecessor was, um, because he, we we understand. That right now you have a lot of servers, right? And you have firewalls and everything else, which is great. My only point is, um, in a lot of municipalities, they're moving um toward cloud much quicker. Or security business more than anything else, you you move your S L A to them versus having. Really own it yourself and hopefully restore it. But I don't know if you have an approach, seems like there's some funds in here for that. But do you have any personal preferences as far as that's concerned?
I do prefer to manage the restoration on premises. We have a cyber rider on our insurance policy, uh, which will. Bring in outside resources to help. Get us back up and running faster. I feel that offloading your risk to a third party provider is sometimes a better solution. But sometimes it's not, so we really need to to weigh that and I haven't had the time in my position to make those judgments yet.
Up to fire station.
Uh, actually, could we, could we talk about the network fiber installation? But if we're if we're going to suggest to the council priorities, I think that that's. That is actually something of all of these things.
The reason that we have held off funding on that is because Frontier has run services for fiber all around town and we're currently. Uh, migrating off Breeze Line to Frontier onto the state contract. It's going to save us. Mid-five figures over five years uh in utilities, so. Before we make a judgment as to whether or not we should run the town fiber, I think uh we should see how it plays out with Frontier.
Okay, so not in terms of um. I guess here's my question is. You're seeing how it plays out with how the provider. Handles the existing network?
Yeah, we we want to see. How the transition from Frontier to Verizon seems to be handled. And then make a better assessment as to whether it would save us money to. Here is being acquired by Verizon. Yes, so the fiber lines that are handled by Frontier are going to be handled by Verizon in the future. It's not a no for the project, it's just a, not right now, there's a lot of stuff to juggle.
Just when I, when I'm thinking about utilities, I I have started thinking about internet services, fiber, that kind of stuff uh in the same vein as. Water and electric because it's. Essential at this, right? It's it's a public utility in my mind, should be.
We have an old um spoken hub, that that's one of the issues, right? And. I presume, right?
What we're running right now, the fiber, uh, I mean, the Frontier Fiber, sorry, it's getting close to my bedtime. Is more of a mesh system, so you'll be able to route directly from, say, golf course. Over to the golf course maintenance building or from the golf course to the tree or from the P D to Spicer House. Uh, and that allows us to bring in some resiliency. I'm looking into what it would cost to get C E N into the police station. Um, so that we'll have a backup internet there uh so that we can, you know, if a connection goes down to the town hall, we can route out um. Route out the police department. So there's a lot of resiliency that's built in there that would be. A lot of overhead to maintain, we run our own fiber circuit.
Fire station learning systems.
Although I I can't speak to that because I haven't been involved in that C I P.
Presentation equipment replacement upgrades, but we're all interested in seeing that suppose, but it's not.
Oh, the the G I S assessment has been postponed because. I don't know what was planned, I don't know who they were going to contract with and it's not something that I've been able to find the time for yet, so.
I find that one to be pretty important for.
Integrates into everything, yeah, absolutely.
This town's G I S is far superior than any other town.
It's fantastic and Noah, the G I S coordinator is fantastic. He does such a great job. He's brilliant. He's a brilliant data scientist.
I mean, I do it and you try to go to other towns and it's, it is. Amount of information that you're getting there is.
Right, I agree.
So much, so nice.
And it's not just what's provided to the public, there's a lot of stuff on the backend that the public doesn't see. That we utilize for things like uh business at water and sewer, uh, a lot of the public safety. Uh, we're exporting data right now from our G I S system for voting districts. They're changing, they're making some changes to the connected voter voter registration system, so we're providing G I S data for that. It's, there's a lot of things that it integrates with. Yes, no, no, he's, he's.
Well, out of that stuff, you know, when you have builders or developers coming into a place and. Right away, it's difficult to find out if, you know, what what is there? That's uh, you know, fantastic, turns you away right, you know, right from the get-go and.
You know that uh number you call before you dig?
Yes.
Is that? Do they tap into that?
I have no idea. Sorry.
The state program?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it's.
Talk to our.
Are there two sets of systems or are they?
Reference it, but usually they're coming out physically, C D, C D Y D and.
Uh, they're absolutely.
Locating it exactly where things are right there, you know, measuring off of.
The accuracy of G I S is based on some historical stuff, so it's could be here, it could be there at this point anyway and. Gets upgraded as these guys come out with call before you dig. And then it gets up to.
How's the scanning going?
The document scanning? Uh, it's progressing. I'm involved to the extent that I'm reviewing electronic. Document retention and requirements for metadata while scanning and documents, trying to make sure that we're compliant.
That talking to. Patrick Jay here.
Is that the H R one or the planning one?
H R, H R is I, yeah. Yeah, well, they didn't have anything for H R. I do recall. The initial request for this one. It's nice to meet you. There's this push now where a lot of younger folks are suddenly getting interested in going on in local politics and I love to see it. It's exactly what I meant.
We're all so young. Well, there's the new public twenty-eight, twenty-two and and the Fed. Need discrimination of seventy-five and E O one-one four-one that. Now, we need to get into uh. Economic assistance front, I don't know why we are reviewing that.
Pays for infrastructure generally, um, with projects, construction that might be beyond what the developer.
Alright, so if I make a recommendation that you scrap everything from that golf course and make them increase their. Use, so if we're complaining about. Developers who don't want to come here because they're not getting their ROI because they don't have their sewer, they don't have this, they don't have that. This could potentially be sourced, right?
Well, that goes to the study to see how many people it's serving and that then react. Though, though I didn't even know.
It's rarely used, as I understand.
Though it seemed to be used for for the same people actually because it was used for a SIFT and for uh the standard. And and they're they're two are married. So it's interesting if those. I guess I used to have a little.
I don't say that word.
Open space.
They're coming in again this year.
Wayfinding sign project.
You know, right now we are still. Using money that has already been um dedicated to it, so.
The other things that we're going to get to see before they kind of show up, I remember there's a whole lot more done for downtown Mystic that we went crazy about. Economic development strategy.
Right, this is an update of the two thousand nineteen plan.
If you're reading into it, if we're paying for it now and it's going to take a year to complete. And get adopted, so a year to complete, God knows how long they're going to take to adopt it. We're going to have our P O C D done by the time that this is. Issued.
Not if it was like the last time.
So, you know, it would be ready to go on the street by, you know, July, be looking for a consultant, it could be.
To to look for a consultant and then nine to twelve months to do it and then how many months for the town council and the economic development commission to endorse it?
Regardless, the the document would be done and that base information would certainly be fed into the P O C D.
Uh, okay, I I hear that and I I'm happy with that, but how much time between? When we get it. And when we're issuing the P O C D, what we have? Right, if if the if the plan right now is to get the P O C D. Out by, what is it, summer of twenty twenty-six? And this, this will be done summer of twenty twenty-six? Maybe even fall twenty twenty-six? Depending on how you can get a consultant on board and move in things along. I'm just saying like, are are we going, if it's to support the P O C D, but it's not going to be done until after the P O C D is issued?
It's also used for our our economic development staff also uses it like.
I wish we had this last year.
I think it was in last year.
That's why it takes so long to get, a lot of times, these things done is that you don't have all the ducks in a row.
But we had a big discussion about trying to align the P O C D with when the census was taken. And we're. Slipped a year, but I think.
The data doesn't come out until twenty twenty-two anyway, the twenty twenty, so.
So. And that, to me, was one of the biggest things because we were basing all these numbers on, you know. Well, here's the growth of population and here's the number of people over fifty and here's, you know, all this stuff. It was. Eight years old, you know.
We're going to be hiring someone to review our drainage standards?
So it's actually a joint plan with Public Works um to update the subdivision regulations and river drain standards. Those two documents mesh, each one um refers to the other. Um, so we definitely really need to look at our designs.
We prioritize that one too, please. I would like to, yeah. That's important to me. I mean, those, I mean, you look at our subdivision, they're still on a typewriter.
Sign, you know, the the guidelines is, you know, huge cul-de-sacs and and using hardened pipe for drainage and. Things have just really progressed. That needs to be reflected in the road and brain standards as well.
Well, it's either, yeah, it's either that or we do it. Piece by piece, which doesn't, you know, it needs an entire, it needs to be retyped. Well, I mean, it's just, you know, when you see a document like that. Uh, and you look and you look at it. Immediately, a person from the outside looking at it thinks of it as ancient, right?
I was listening to Deb.
Confirm the ones that that you want to support in getting a memo for the council and town manager. Um, are the. Study for the sewer line extension of Route one seventeen, the aquatics facility and then the subdivision and rodent drain.
I personally would like to have that mention of the aquatics to to say that it is a neutral sighting. Not not biggest ones. Because I know somebody's going to, oh, no, we already had.
So not not to the council, but I also have the note that um how wanted the repaving um. Program to consult the complete streets committee.
Anything that has to do with those sidewalk numbers, they should not be going down.
And I'd like a. Full single number on how much it's been on that goal first. Because I that's, I mean, I just keep back to it. It it's just. Won't get on my soapbox.
Chain of motion torture? Second?
Second.